I'll put in, call it to order. We have a new member here, Harry Kohler, and I will let him begin again.
And Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to welcome Mr. Kohler to the Planning Commission. He has also served as an alternate for the City of Fairhope zoning board of adjustment. Mr. Kohler has 38 years' experience with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, has been previously a licensed professional engineer, and so those splendid qualifications will certainly be beneficial to this Planning Commission. We're certainly excited to have him aboard and thank him for his service to this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And as I always say, Harry, don't expect to be clapped forever again. The first item on the agenda is SD 1918, public hearing to consider a request to judge the gravel gravel for a preliminary plat approval of the re-subdivision of Lot Four, Bay Avenue subdivision, and three lot subdivisions.
Chairman Commissioners will lead off with this case, and this is a case that you have seen before. So if I proceed a little quickly through some of the details, by all means, stop me. We can back up as necessary through the slideshow. We begin with our typical aerial views and the zoning map that you see before you and on our screens. And then you'll see here the basic background information of the subdivision. As you'll see, the request is three lots with the lot sizes shown before you and the parent parcel noted as well. You see both developers and the property owners. What I'd call to everyone's attention is that what is before you tonight and what we're requesting, the request is going to be for a preliminary plat approval. We'll explain the details behind that here in just a moment. This is a, here is a copy of the currently requested plat where you see the three lots. You'll see Lot One on the west, Lot Two just to the southeast of the existing cul-de-sac, Lot Three on the far east side. What I'll call to your attention, and you'll want to look at this on the screen, on your screens, of color-coded, a 15-foot-wide private access easement. That is to be utilized for accessing Lot Three across Lot Two from the existing cul-de-sac. There was some discussion last time about accessing Lot Three from Davis Lane. We'll discuss that in a little bit greater detail on another slide. Wanted to give you the overview right here. To give you some property details that we wanted to illuminate for you for tonight's discussion. During the initial review of the application, there was some discussion between city staff and the engineer of record and a desire by the developer to have a shared project for making drainage improvements to North Mobile Street. So what you will see is a condition of approval, once we get to the end of our slides involving this case. So you'll notice the condition of approval noted right there. It'll request adoption of an agreement between the City of Fairhope and the developer for approval by the city council for installation of drainage improvements by the city. This will be reviewed by the Public Works Director and staff, very similar to what we would have on any normal development. We will have a final plat approval process. This will be a major subdivision where we will receive as-built drawings as we would with any other subdivision. Wanted to provide a little bit of detail right here. This is the southern terminus of North Mobile Street. So this is actually the cul-de-sac in that area, as you see on the screen. That area is not a paved, it's not a paved publicly maintained street. It is publicly maintained, but it's not paved. You have to have a paved publicly maintained to meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations, so therefore a waiver has been requested that's reflected in this request. We're gonna, the staff recommends acceptance of that waiver so that the southern terminus of North Mobile Street may remain unpaved. The justification is to maintain the existing aesthetics of that neighborhood as desired by the citizens. I mentioned earlier, we talk about Davis Drive, Davis Lane, and the application and the request before you today does not request that proposed Lot Three should be accessed via Davis Drive, Davis Lane. It's labeled both ways in some documents. This does not request that. I've identified it here on this map, so you can see where it is, but they're not requesting access from that. And as we mentioned earlier, one of the conditions of approval will be to accept the waiver so that Lot Three can be accessed via the 15-foot private access easement that follows along the boundary of Lot Two. So therefore, that'll bring us to our staff recommendation. And so staff's recommending approval of the case, SD 19.18, Lot Four Echo Base subdivision, and again, adoption of agreement between the City of Fairhope and the developer to be approved by the city council. Design and construction monitoring of the drainage improvements related to the subject development, the improvements to be installed by the City of Fairhope. As we mentioned earlier, the plans and profiles of drainage will be reviewed by the Public Works Director and staff. In addition, acceptance of a waiver of Article Five, Section E3A, to apply as follows right there, that proposed Lot Three may be accessed from the southern terminus of North Mobile Street via the 15-foot access easement. And then the, again, the existing unpaved southern terminus of North Mobile Street shall remain unpaved, preserve the aesthetics of the neighborhood, preserve the aesthetics of the existing neighborhood, but include the drainage improvements we talked about in Item One and Condition of Approval One above. Commissioners, happy to answer questions from staff. Mr. Larry Smith is here with us today, representing the applicant. He's their engineer of record. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff at this time?
I'll let it, no, I'm sorry. Well, they may be for Larry and staff. I just wanted to understand what the drainage improvements are that are required. I've only seen it dry, so I don't have an understanding of what.
Correct. So the, so that's a great question, Mr. Chairman, and the answer is, is we do not have a drainage improvement at this time. So therefore, we're, as a condition of approval, asking that we enter into that agreement between the city and the developer, and then, once that, once that agreement is in place, if it's the pleasure of the city council to approve it, then we go through the development process of those drawings that'll be reviewed by staff with the assistance of the Public Works Director.
I guess then, to clarify, I was trying to understand what the drainage issue was. I mean, I see that it's just gravel and flat, there's no swales, but what is the issue we need to solve?
Sure. And we'll ask, we'll ask the engineer of record if he can elaborate in greater detail, but that, what I can tell you is that is an existing, that is an existing, ongoing issue, and Mr. Smith can give his evaluation of that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of off-site flow that's coming to the, in the cul-de-sac there, and there's nothing there to capture it, so it's flowing across our property and causing some issues on the downstream properties. And several years ago, the city actually engaged an engineer to look at fixing the issue, but because of obtaining the easements needed to route that storm system, it just never moved forward. Now that we're subdividing it, we've been working with the staff to try to come up with a way to get the storm where it needs to go, and we're gonna provide the easements needed and provide the design for it, and the city will install it like they were originally planning to do.
Okay.
But it'll be, it'll be a less complex storm system.
The street's draining across the lot and eroding the block?
Yes.
Is that basic? Okay.
Do you have anything else you feel?
I mean, I think Buford went through all the issues that we were bringing before y'all last time, that we kind of tried to hash out. I think we resolved all of them to the staff's, the staff's satisfaction, so if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them, but I think Buford went through each of the issues we had and how we came about rectifying those.
Any questions for Larry at this time? Do you put, is this, I mean, we had a public hearing last meeting. No, we did not. We did not, okay. This is the public hearing now. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Do I want, so in that case, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the Commissioner.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I've got, a motion to approve.
A motion to approve case SD 19.18, re-subdivision of Lot Four Echo Base subdivision, preliminary plat approval. Motion approved.
Okay.
Subject, staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I've got one question for Larry, any further discussion? Lot number one is, is very large and has that wetland patch in between. I mean, there's no common area down there for the three lots to share Bay Access. Is that just basically two lots with the easement, and then a third lot, but there's no common?
There's no common area called out down there.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns under further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, public hearings to consider a request of the Martinet Family Trust for plat approval of the Martinet subdivision, a two-lot minor division.
All right, thank you.
Come on. Okay.
This property owner.
If you notice, you did get an item that Nancy added.
Yes.
An additional map, so make sure you pull that up. That was what Nancy.
Yeah, and I'll kind of explain what's happened on this one. This property is located on the south side of the intersection of Canes Lay and, Canes Lane and Lareway. It's a minor, two-lot minor division, and one of the things, if you'll look at the front, I mean, where the front building setback line is, it wasn't marked on your first map, but when we asked them to mark it, it's actually, or label it, it's actually at, where they put it was at 45 feet, not 35, and our regs require that they have 75 feet minimum lot frontage at the, that front building setback line of 35 feet. And unfortunately, they don't have quite that, so I think they're looking at tabling it at this point, and I'll give, Seth Moore was here just a second ago, so.
He left.
Oh, he left?
Yes.
Okay, well, he, he said he wanted to table it. I don't know why he left, but he had said, he told me he wanted to table it, so I thought he was gonna be here to table it. So not sure what happens at this point, because he, they tabled it, or last week, they held it, or.
The commission, if you open a public, you'll have to open a public hearing to take any of the actions you're able to take on, on the plat, but tabling then is one of them, and 30-day period for taking some action won't expire between now and the next meeting, so you can take it off the table at your June meeting and not have to worry about the 30-day deadline.
Okay.
If that's your inclination to just to table.
But basically, they wanted to hold it over to look at the options with regards to that front setback. At the time we wrote it up, we thought that was at 35 feet, but then with the scale, it's actually at 45.
But we're, we talked about all this, so I can drive out there before the next meeting.
Yeah, let's see, where do we?
We need to invest in a laser pointer.
Okay.
If I get one Dollar General and donate it.
The scale of this, unfortunately, is not very good, but if you look, just where the front setback line is, under it, on the one I gave you, it should say front building
But it still says 93.7 and 83.
Right. He doesn't have the right lot width.
Gotcha.
That line is in the wrong place.
Okay.
It should be 10 feet north of where he shows it. If he shows it at 10 feet north, it's, it's not 75.
You don't have that.
Because of the dog leg of the drive coming in.
Right, yeah. So they could have just.
So that's just something they're gonna have to check into and figure out.
All right, so just do I need somebody to make a motion to table to the next meeting? Let's sort of open them.
If they meant table, this is the way we would go, if they meant.
Ken, Ken, would you please get closer to your mic? I can't hear you.
For the commission to take any formal action, including tabling the application, it must first open a public hearing.
Okay.
If, if this developer was using the term "table" but really meant withdraw so you didn't have to take any action on it, then that, that would be, would be an option, but I don't, they're not here, apparently.
That's true. So apparently, the, the applicant's representative is not with us here, Ken, so.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead in that case and open the public hearing at this point.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody in the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and at the next meeting, I might reopen it, just if anybody wishes to tell, to, just to speak, just to rather give somebody the choice rather than not. With that said, do I have a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I'll move that we table case SD 1919 at the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor to table SD 1919 to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD 1921, request of 10 North Section Street LLC for a site plan approval of a, of the Boutique Hotel, a 13-unit project. This project is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Section Street and Fairhope Avenue at 10 North Section Street, Buford.
And Chairman Commissioners, the, the series of slides that we'll use to examine this case, you'll notice on your agenda, you also have the site plan review related to the same case in succession, right behind the, the multiple occupancy project. So what we will do is, we will utilize several slides to answer both sets of questions on the two different applications. So what we'll do here is, first, I'll take you through the background information, give you the information, the criteria by which an MOP is reviewed, and then pause to allow the commission to take action, and then launch right into the criteria for the site plan review. So we'll begin, if you'll look on your screens, we have our, our typical zoning map, as well as our aerial map that we use customarily. You'll see this is zoned B2 general business and at the address we discussed previously. I'll call your attention here to the background information. You see on your screen right here, Mr. Larry Smith is the engineer of record, Mr. Clay Adams is the architect of record, and Mr. Matt Bowers is a developer. That development entity is 10 North Section LLC. We're recommending approval with conditions, and we'll go through each of the details. As we mentioned earlier, 13-unit multiple occupancy project within the planning jurisdiction. Zoomed out quite a bit here, the next three or four slides, we'll flip through very quickly, and then we'll return to them as needed to help answer the commission's questions. This is a site plan, this is an engineering site plan showing location at, at Section Street and Fairhope Avenue. Here is one of the, one of the elevation views, and this would be looking to the northeast from the center of that intersection of Section Street and Fairhope Avenue, looking toward the proposed structure. Here's another, looking toward the southeast from Section Street, looking back toward the proposed structure. Here is, here is, we're gonna go through the different floors. So this is the ground floor, the ground floor, ground floor conceptual drawing. What I'll call your attention to here, Commissioners, you'll notice, you'll notice the, and I'll try to identify it here, is, here is the Fairhope clock location. Here's, here are the two other, two other floors, so you can see the number of units, the room layout of each of the floors. You see both second and third floor. And then the rooftop terrace on this particular drawing, and you see a typical room layout for the hotel rooms. You'll notice HVAC mechanical on the roof. This section cut, what we wanted to depict here is show that there are three proposed floors, and then the only portion of the structure that would be going to the 40-foot building height would be the necessary ingress/egress structures going to 40 feet height, but this would be only three floors, no actual floors to 40 feet height.
That's basically the elevator.
Yes, sir. So I'll flip back here, and so if you look in this particular drawing, you can see the elevator slash stair shaft. So that roof would go to 40 feet, but not the other, not the, the, not the rooftop terrace. That would not be going to 40 feet. And then, we'll talk, let's talk about a traffic study for a moment, so, and you see an excerpt of that right there from Mr. Smith, that the trip generation of the proposed development does not trigger the requirement for a traffic study. And what you'll note right there, 10, 10 hotel rooms, it would take 85 hotel rooms to generate 50 trips to trigger a traffic study. Also, call your attention to the zoning ordinance in this regard. That allowance within the central business district of the zoning ordinance does not require onsite parking for non-dwelling units, which are proposed by this development. So we'll make some notes here. These are typical items we review as a part of a multiple occupancy project. What I'll note here is that the Fairhope clock, it appears to be partially on private property, partially on the right-of-way. The proposed structure provides clearance for the clock without relocating it, and we saw the enlarged drawing. You'll see on this slide right here, you'll notice a bit of, an area of clearance allowed for that, that the building contemplates. A brief note about some utilities, essentially all utilities for this site are furnished by Fairhope Public Utilities. There's some conditions of approval related to that, we'll get to in just a moment. Some notes about the existing site, it's an existing developed site, it's 100% impervious. The development contemplating here will remain 100% impervious. In lieu, talking about drainage for a moment, in lieu of a drainage system, this drainage will, this will connect to existing conveyance systems, as is typical for central business district developments. And also, as a condition of approval, a proof of a clean site will be submitted prior to land disturbance. As everyone may know, there's some prior uses on that property from many years ago, and so we've been, we've been given information that a proof of a clean site will be furnished.
And they're taking the building that's currently there down.
Yes, sir. So the, the existing building on, on the property right now, the most recent business in that building was post-net, that would come down to make way for this development. Back to this color rendering right here for just a moment, and we can flip back to any of these as needed. Also, another couple of renderings, just showing the relationship of the clock to the building, both facing the building and also facing toward the southwest, toward the Fairhope Pharmacy Building. So the staff recommendation for approval, one, a couple of brief notes, first of all. So this is a multiple occupancy project, similar, but not necessarily identical to a subdivision, so as a result, and as this commission has seen the past two years, when we're considering an MOP, there are some conditions of approval that are strictly procedural to make an MOP work, so that way we get closeout documents at the staff level. So staff recommends approval of the case, subject to the following conditions. One, we, item one there, and this is very specific, related to some utility issues. What I call your attention to is that it's possible, there may be some, we're gonna get technical for a mo, for a moment, if everyone would just, pardon me, there may be some subterranean electrical transformers to service this site, so therefore, the electric department reserves the right to review and approve that method of installation, because a lot of detailing would still be needed on the building. Also, reserves the right to require a pad mount transformer if necessary, once we go through that process. Also, the gas department reserves the right to review and approve the natural gas piping routing. So these are the conditions affecting utilities. Item two is requesting that proof of a clean site that we mentioned earlier. This is related to some possible former underground fuel storage tanks from the former business on the site. So we're requesting that as a condition of approval.
Gaston Ford?
Yes, sir, from the old Gaston Ford, from probably 50 years ago, but we've been, we've been instructed that we would receive a proof of a clean site. We wanted to preserve that as a condition of approval. And then, item three, the, item three is the routine request for as-built documents that we typically request of any MOP, because this is not a typical subdivision where we'd have a final plat approval. And then finally, item four would be approval of the site plan review, case SR 19.01, which we'll consider here in just a moment, which of course, that is approved by the city council. So Commissioners, I'm happy to answer questions and to flip back through the numerous slides as much as you wish to answer staff questions. We have both Mr. Clay Adams and Mr. Larry Smith here on behalf of the owner, on behalf of the developer, to answer technical questions as well.
Buford, I've got one quick question, and I'll see if any, what else does. 10 hotel rooms, but the proposal says 13 units.
Yes, sir. So, yes, sir, and so there will be some units on the first floor. The, the composition of those units is not known at this time, but that would be three units on the first floor, as you see in this lease space we've got up on the screen right now.
So it could be retail venues.
Yes, sir. It could be any, it could be any one of a number of, yes, sir, it could be restaurant, any number of, of, any one of a number of units allowable in B2, and actually encouraged by the central business district.
Yeah, that's great.
The central business district encourages retail and restaurants on the first floor, so there's certainly space available for that right there.
Perfect. All right, any more questions for Buford? Thank you, Buford. Clay, do you have anything to add at this time?
If you don't mind. And Clay, help yourself to these slides.
I might get you to help me with that.
I'm right here for it.
My name is Clay Adams, I know most of you. I'm with Walcott Adams Purnell Architects, and I wanted to hit a few highlights. Buford did a great job of explaining all the technical data and even some of our architectural designs, but I wanted to hit a few highlights and give you some insight into, you know, into Matt's vision for the thing. We all know it's a special site, we know it's a corner of Fairhope and Section Street, is the center of our town, and we know how important that is, and we wanted to make sure that that came across. I wanted Matt to tell you a little bit about his history. We always enjoy talking to our clients about how they came to Fairhope, their story, their connection, and Matt has an interesting one also, and I think it, it was part of the thing that decided for us to get involved with the project, because we believe in it strongly, especially after sitting and talking to Matt. So I wanted him to talk to you briefly, and meet him, and then I'll complete a quick presentation, and of course, answer any questions.
Can I have you come up just a minute?
Yeah.
You're gonna just put him on the spot, did you, Clay? Gave a heads up, I hope.
A little bit of a heads up, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. You know, ladies and gentlemen, it's, you know, as a child, you know, I grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana, and, you know, I had a lot of family up and down the Gulf Coast, and my mother used to load me and my sister up in our car and drive to Fairhope, you know, in the 80s. And I think as a, you know, compare, contrast to where I grew up, you know, in mid-city New Orleans, I think it represented, you know, a lot of things to her that felt, you know, she, it was like a Norman Rockwell painting to her. She loved the city, she still does. She'd like for me to move her here one day if you'd have her. So I grew up with a lot of familiarity with the city. I'm invested, as a business owner, in this community generally, up in Daphne, and, you know, over the years, I've wanted to be invested, you know, in Fairhope for the long term. I'm not a merchant builder, I've done a lot of development projects, all of it I still own. I've never built anything and sold it, or, you know, done anything of that nature. I think, I'd like for you guys to know, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very aware of how important this site is. I'm very aware of the importance of it, the significance, and my hope is to do a project, that's a fantastic project, and build a building that any future buildings would be measured against, in terms of, you know, every measurable quality you can imagine, with a use that could be an enduring use, that would last for many, many years to come. So thank you for having me here, and thank you for hearing, hearing my, my story. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll touch on a few other points. As we know, like I said, it is the center of town, and we know the northeast corner contains our clock. We wanted to let you know that we're embracing the clock in our design. We don't want to move the clock, we don't want to relocate it, that's not our plan. We understand how important, when people are visiting, that they take pictures of, from that intersection, it's probably the most photographed spot in town, other than the bay and the pier, obviously, and we're hoping that our building becomes a backdrop for those selfies and pictures on all social medias and articles that are written about our wonderful town. Just briefly, one other thing to Buford's description of the plan, he said it's a 3,000-square-foot footprint, it's three floors, rooms are on the second and third floor. One interesting design concept is that we want to do themes for our rooms that might have to do with the interior design and the furnishings, and that the rooms might have a theme of artists, writers, history, or even the environment, you know, all the wonderful things that we all love about Fairhope, which would be a great interior design aspect. I think, I want. I think, I, I wanted you to know, we've been involved with two of the other three buildings on the corner, and we're proud of them. We were involved in helping getting the metal panels removed from Fairhope Pharmacy, and redoing the windows on the second floor, and returning it to its glory, if you will. We were involved with McKean Building, which had a radius balcony and was a, you know, pretty dramatic design, and it even contained some of the first, second floor residential that was in downtown, and you know, we have had a lot of others since then. But we want our building to build on that and, and complete that, the architecture that has been established on, on, on the most important corner of town, as we said. And generally, in, in closing, you know, it's Matt's goal to do something very unique that's not currently available. We have a hotel downtown, but it's considerably larger, our price point won't be the same. I don't believe we'll be in competition in any way. You know, the hotel will receive flow and overbooking from the Grand Hotel, I'm sure, and people that want to be closer to town. We want to do a timeless, striking design that we said, and it would be our best wish that somebody might even think it was an historic building that was the old end, that was originally in Fairhope, and if so, that would be the perfect architectural statement, you know, from our aspect and our pride and involvement in the project. So, if you have any other questions, we could help answer about the technical issues, the design, or even the approval process, and if it gets too technical, we have Larry here to answer some also, if we can help in any way.
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Somebody else wants to go first. On this slide, it says 10 hotel units, is that room type B, count as two?
We're, we're going back and forth between the number, and the advice was to use the greater number, and, you know, there's a little bit of market study involved in that. Matt's leaning mostly now to single rooms, you know, so we just wanted to make sure you knew there would be, I've been saying eight to 10, but there would be no more than 10.
I love the way y'all cut that corner. I think that makes all the difference, with or without the clock there.
Yes.
It just opens stuff up so much more.
And one of the, one of the last-
I think it makes the building look really a lot more interesting, too.
Well, then, sometimes as an architect, you know, you're affected by given parameters many times in renovations, but sometimes, you know, and again, it was never Matt's intention to move the clock, it was how can we make this building and both of those stay? One quick thing I forgot to mention was the city's working on two exciting things, we understand, which is making that corner circle bigger. We were involved in the original corners, pedestrian, the flowers, and the design of those corners some 25 years ago, and, and when they started happening, I was really proud of that. But they're gonna make that one bigger, as we understand, and they're also working on, let's see, on improving the city courtyard, which I think would be, both of those, in addition to our project, is gonna make the corner even more special, yep.
The rooftop terrace, so the rooftop will be accessible by hotel guests?
That's, and we're not even sure, yes, that's what our, our plan is, it will have no roof on it, therefore it is not a story, and we're not sure of the use, but we did, did want to have it available for, it would, you can imagine a lot of wonderful uses for either the tenant down or the rooms, you know, but that's all up, you know, there, at this point, it's hard to have all the details, you know, finalized, but, yep.
I see Jack Burrell in the audience back there. Think you could get beads on top of the roof from your float, Jack, or be a little far of a throw?
Absolutely.
Well, I, I think it's a beautiful design. I think y'all have done a great job on it. Any parking, I mean, people just find what they find?
Well, you, you know, staff has done a great job of analyzing in some of the previous meetings. I believe that we will have less parking than the current uses that were there. We, we used PostNet, PostNet has 10 patrons an hour, 80 hours, 80, 80 people per day, they were a busy place, not everybody could carry their box for blocks, so they drove to it, and with 10 rooms and whatever goes downstairs, I, I believe will be less, but again, we're not required for parking. But Matt's talked a lot about, with the literature that comes with checking in, the methods of checking in, to recommend that a patron's park in the parking deck, and of course, all of us that owns business, we all ought to do more of that. We used to own 61 North Section, and we made our employees park in the parking deck to keep those available up for our business and clients, you know, and it's a good practice. And he's, he's, he says we're gonna, you know, express that in helping people understand how to get to and use the hotel, and it's not even a block, it's a zigzag, you know, middle of a block and over and you're there, so, yep.
Any further questions for Clay?
I was just gonna comment a little bit on the, the two stair towers and, and the elevation. It looks like you could eliminate one from going all the way up to the rooftop, right?
I hope so. At this point, code issues come into play, you know, if you're gonna put someone up there-
So, the terrace is gonna require two exits?
Code-wise, if you're putting people somewhere in, in a, in a building code-
But, but you won't access it by the elevator, right? Or will it be a hydraulic elevator?
That's why it's up there, too, but if you offer it to anyone by code, in, in the ADA world, you have to make it accessible to everyone. If you put anyone up there, any place, you always have to have two means of egress from any space on any floor, so those are both, both code issues. That's why all three are up there.
For anybody in the audience, if you see the photo that Buford has on right now, that's the city courtyard they were referring to, which is to the north of the building.
And the other comment I would have about the, the B2 zone, which is what it is, and hotels are allowed by maybe appeal or, or special conditions.
That's right.
And I, I'm just recognizing that, you know, when I like, when I pull up to a hotel, and it's not gonna be near as fancy as this one maybe, but I like to unload all my stuff and put it in the front door before I go park.
Yes.
And I, I can just, I see right now you've got delivery trucks parked in the middle of Fairhope Avenue, or, or in the middle of Section, all day long, and it's an aggravation to traffic. And I can see people, and I don't know how many people will stop there every day to load and unload luggage, but it, I would love to see some way to have people pull into something, and maybe the corner off the building be a little bit, I don't know how you do it, but it just seems like a-
Well, you know, the-
I mean, you, you won't repeat customers, I think.
Yes.
And if you're gonna have an aggravation to get your stuff into the thing, they're not hiking the Appalachian Trail with everything on their back.
Well, the Hampton Inn doesn't have, you know, they have parking spaces, but many times, they're full, and if you've got 55 people and they're all checking in, it check-in from 11 to 3, they're not all gonna do it either, so physically, that's not possible for them, and they survive. What happens, we all get spoiled, you know, a little bit in Fairhope, that we have to walk a block and a half, in most big cities, you, you do that all the time. You wouldn't want anybody pulling in and backing out anywhere in that traffic, so, you know, those technical aspects can't be achieved without taking a parking space away. Matt and I have paid attention to that site many times, and there are some spaces available. So, what you do is you go to the parking deck or your closest space, and you, and you take your suitcase with you, and you go check in, and obviously, most time nowadays, people are traveling with the overhead pieces or the pieces on wheels, and that's how you do it, it's just a level. This is a prototype of other projects that exist in other cities that we've studied with similar conditions. It's not a big hotel, it's kind of a trend thing, a boutique hotel, and it's actually a personless hotel. So, what you're doing is, you're not even stopping at the desk, you're going straight to your room with a code that you got. So, a lot of unique things, and we're trying to meet a niche market that is not 50 or 60 rooms, so it is a particular client, you know, that, that wants to be there.
And, and I'm sure y'all can solve that, I mean, until you said personless, I was thinking, well, you solve it with the valet, you solve it with a, you know, somebody gets a text. I'm sure that's something you can solve operationally rather than physically.
Matt's talked about that also, yes.
And the single tax, the, the parking lot for the single tax corporation built on the side of the library is pretty close also.
And, and-
And it has spaces in it quite often.
And the one behind Jewelens, you know, and there's two lots there, and, yep, you know, and I've traveled a lot, like any of us, and we've, I've, I've been to worst things, a child in Birmingham and visited a lot while she was in college, and some unique things like that, across the street in a parking deck. It's not typical by any means, but again, it's an eight to 10-room hotel.
Right, but the examples that you're quoting of other boutique hotels that have the self-check-in mechanism, they're built without parking spaces, and, and you have to walk somewhere to get there?
In large cities.
And you're comfortable with that.
I'd like to also add, you know, based upon the knowledge and studies that we've conducted, this'll work. But if, if at any point I become uncomfortable as a, as a business owner or operator, I've secured already surface parking nearby and a valet contractor that'll put somebody on the street to receive vehicles and valet cars, and, you know, you know, so we have, you know, a first plan, second and third plans, I think are all, you know, I don't, I don't expect the Griswolds to pull up with the luggage on the, I don't think that's a reasonable thing to, to do, you know, so it's important for me to tell you, we already have a surface parking lot achieved that's easily doable, it's very close.
I have a question. I know you said like, well, you said it was gonna be personless hotel, and I've lived a lot of places, and I've lived overseas, and I've been in boutique hotels, but we have a lot of functions that go on downtown Fairhope, so are you just relying on coach systems to tow your trucks, I mean, to tow these vehicles away when they find that upfront parking spot, and we have whatever event going on, you know, who's gonna maintain that? When we need the, even though they put the signs out, no parking, at some point, you may have that individual that decides, I'm just gonna leave my car here.
Okay.
If it's a personless hotel.
Well, you know, the thought it's a limited service hotel, that's the, that's the thought. Again, along with the parking, you know, there's another provision that we actually put somebody on-site 24 hours a day to monitor, receive gas, all those things, which is likely, but I'm not sure of the technical.
And I've seen that at the, at the last, at the last year's dog parade, there was a lot of people that came early and stayed, and they had to tow the trucks. I think what you do is you make sure that your literature for renting a room has all that with listed special occasions, and that you will be towed during those things, and you know, that's a marketing key, it absolutely is, and even notify people that you'll be parking a block and away, you know, a block and a half away, and, and notify them, and some people probably may not do it for those reasons, right?
Any more questions, commissioners? This is not a public hearing, I will open up.
I've got a question. This is an MOP.
I do have one more-
Yes, ma'am.
-question, which is not really planning and zoning, but I did, I just, the cantilever over the existing building, I was just curious how that, in one of the renderings.
Right now, we're not, okay?
Okay.
Yes, and we've met, at our community meetings, it was, it's a new process the city's done, I think it's a great idea. We met with the owner of Andres and Master Joe, and made them feel comfortable, we don't know what we're doing there, we're trying to keep it off of there, we're, we're not counting that. It would be a structural challenge.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and you would have to maintain any roof vents that they have and so forth, so it may be much easier not to acquire that space, and right there, and right now, that's as much as we know, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question real quick. Are the windows indoors, are they fully functional to open?
Yes, I, you know, one of our first Matt, Matt, again, he didn't want to put balconies that intrude on the scale of that street even more. We wanted these Romeo and Juliet balconies that you opened the doors inward and can stand there, but, you know, from an architectural standpoint, he wasn't really interested in 40 people being in each room on the balcony, you know, that wasn't his concept, and I think it's a great architectural concept, and I think it's a prettier building with a better scale for that. So, a quaint door that opens in with a rail at the flush with the facade, so they, or doors that look like large windows.
I'm excited to see you develop a rooftop terrace. I have many people that have been asking me about it for a long time, so I think that that's something that Fairhope would really enjoy.
It could be, and we're trying to do it all within the, with the, you know, within the current heights to abide by those, and after all of our meetings, we worked really hard to try to incorporate all the comments that come out of meetings with Buford, and with the merchants that, that we've heard from, and, and the community meetings, yep.
Just for some feedback, how much turnout do you get in the community meetings?
Yeah, that is neat, because it was a new one, not a lot. We had to turn those meetings, meeting minutes into Buford, and we'll have a list of that. It was probably only 10 people, two adjacent property owners for sure that, that were really affected, you know, and maybe a couple of people that were interested.
I was kinda wondering, because I heard a lot of negativity about this project early, and then it just kinda went away.
Well, again, and-
So, I was wondering if that was part of it.
You know, Matt's, I promise, we don't get involved with just any project, we try to do projects that we're proud of, and we've done a bunch of projects downtown, and we, of course, think they're all beautiful, but he's trying to do the right thing, and I think maybe we've kept working hard to maybe sell some of those people, or, and we've taken a lot of time when we see someone on the street to talk to them, and, and they ask us, of course, all the time, and we try to take five minutes and explain what we're doing, so, you know, may, maybe it's quieting down a little, and people are, it, it, it'll be wonderful once we get it built. Like anything, it's gonna be a challenge to get through that construction, but.
Kind of along this lines, I don't know if this is a question for y'all or for us, but the, the only negative feedback I've had people ask questions about was sort of a backstop against if, sort of like what we're talking about with the parking, can you solve the parking operationally, because people, because you don't want somebody coming back and saying, I, I built this thing, it doesn't work, I need city parking now. And I heard the same question with the, what, you know, what if a 10-person hotel doesn't work and it turns into housing, and then you have housing without-
Right.
-without parking.
Right.
And I, I guess that just falls on the city.
Wouldn't be allowed to be.
It'd be a change of use.
They've got 10 parking spaces.
You'd have to-
Yes.
But just to bring up what the-
And I, I heard some confusion about whether, where the park was, you know, the, what the city owned versus what was private property.
It's a strange little division.
Yeah, Clay, I've got one more, I got a question.
Yes.
Now, I know the idea was tossed out there, since the city owns that courtyard area, about swapping that parcel with that corner parcel to keep a courtyard on the corner by the clock, is that still an option, or is that kinda gone away?
I think Matt's listened to everyone that had an idea, and usually turned to me and said, Clay, not what do you think necessarily, but will this work? And we have explored it. He didn't think he should lead swapping or moving the clock, neither of those, he, he didn't want to be the developer that came in and said, let's do something. He is, I, I believe, and he can speak on it, he's, he's waiting for, if that was a desire, to show him how to do that, and then to evaluate it.
I'm sorry, I'll speak to it. Yeah, I appreciate that, Clay. The, you know, I, I want to do a good project that the people of the city are proud of, and, and part of that commitment is to hearing everybody's opinion in a public hearing or community meeting, including up to any idea regarding, you know, I'm open to anything, you know, if, you know, look, I love the clock, the, it's, if I, I asked myself, if I could buy anything in the city, if it was all the same price, what would I buy? And selfishly, I said, hey, I'd buy, I'd buy this corner right here. I think it's one of the things that makes it so special to visit. So, I don't want to do anything to intrude or impede on that, so if there's a way to move it back a little bit, or do any of these things without harming myself, you know, I, I don't need to gain anything from it, I just want to make it something that, I want to make it known that I'm a, I'm a person that's easy to work with.
No, I appreciate that, and, you know, and I have, you know, I don't have any problem with the design, you know, I think it looks good. However, I don't know why the city purchased that, that parcel, whatever year they purchased it, what their thought was, why they didn't purchase the corner parcel where the clock was. But to me, you know, this design says, this little courtyard is my entry courtyard for the hotel instead of a city courtyard.
Yeah.
So, I don't, you know, the public use of that spot, I think, will be diminished, where if it's flopped to the corner, then there's still a, I think, you know, there's also some design elements where you've got, you know, a courtyard- also some design elements where you've got, you know, a courtyard that you can use on the corner.
I don't disagree with any of that, and I think that, I don't know, it took me two years to buy the site from this lady that I bought it from, so maybe the city experienced the same results I did for the first 11 months of that process. But I'm open and I'm easy and I'm flexible. If somebody would like to show me a way to make it work and everybody's happy, I'm good with that. And to answer, you know, hey, what if a, what if a 10 or 11-room hotel doesn't work with commercial at the bottom, you know, when I approach a project, I have, you know, institutional investment-grade feasibility, studies, reports done. Happy to share that with anybody who wants to see it on a, you know, proprietary basis. It's not good, it's excellent. It's really good. But let's just say people stop, you know, there's a few different other uses that down the road could be used on that potential building or site. If at some point staying downtown in a city like Fairhope becomes out of vogue, you know, I've thought of that and I have a conclusion that you can read and see. You know, the Hampton and the Grand obviously do very well and stay very full, so I think I feel okay about this one.
Well, just to speak to Robert's concern, throw in my two cents on that is, is that there may be a solution with how the city improves that courtyard, because, I mean, architecturally, I think it's a great response to have the corner the way it's shown, the way they designed it. It mimics G.G. and J.'s, it has a presence on the corner, and it makes a nicer courtyard when you're bound, you know, when you don't feel like you're going to fall out into traffic. But I've had the same concern that it does feel like maybe it's not a public courtyard, and maybe the city, if they're going to improve that courtyard, maybe there's some way that it's more city branded or more obviously public and not hotel that might solve that problem, because just architecturally or in sight, it feels like a really nice courtyard. There's just that, you don't want it to feel like people aren't welcome.
Totally agree. I think it has a chance to be very special the way it's designed, but if that's not, you know, I'm open to any suggestion. I think right now, I think, you know, when I pass that site, I see people taking pictures in front of the clock. You know, I don't, I don't, you know, I think there was some confusion as to who actually owned it in the beginning. I wouldn't have honestly thought that it was privately owned. The lady who owned the site has owned it for a very, very long time, and she had, you know, I saw at least two different term sheets from two different businesses that were willing to pay marginally more than I paid, in fact, to buy this. One was a professional office use and the other one was a bank, a regional bank. You know, in her mind, she always wanted to do something like this and wasn't able to do it, and so I'm happy to have her along for the ride as I go through this process.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Just so everybody knows, in most municipalities, this would just go straight to the building department and the building inspector would sign off, so, you know, this isn't, our decision is not, do we like the idea of a hotel being there or not, or the hotel versus a park or what have you, it's just basically, does this meet the building codes and the zoning ordinances is really the breadth of, you know, our decision up here. But Fairhope does like things open and candid, so that's what you're getting right now. If anybody wishes to speak to this item, now is the chance. If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to the Commissioners.
I make a motion to accept S.D. 1921 with staff recommended approval.
I have a motion to accept, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Now, we have a brief pause, and now we're looking at the site plan approval.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Commissioners. So what we'll do here is, what we'll do here is we'll just simply go through the criteria for the site plan review to refresh the Commissioner's memory. The site plan review is a function of the zoning ordinance, so your recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council for final consideration. So, beginning with, beginning with the first, the first criteria, this proposed development is in compliance with the first criteria because it shows the build-to sidewalk, the vehicle use and parking, we discussed ad nauseam in the MOP. Another is eclectic architectural design, which is certainly subjective, but from this reviewer's standpoint, I think it certainly qualifies based upon the drawings that we've seen. Bicycle mobility is a function of the, is a function of the comprehensive plan, and it's possible that as the site is developed, is developed and as the building is fully detailed, it's possible that there may be some requests for relief for that item, again, but that can be reserved for Board of Adjustments purposes. But know this, Commissioners, is that has been contemplated by the applicant and by the design professionals. The second criteria, compliance with other planning documents. I think we, again, covered that sufficiently and in great detail during the MOP process, but know that all applicable ordinance will be enforced as required, mainly related to constructing the site. Next criteria, you see item C.D. comma three. To refresh the Commissioner, to refresh the Commissioner's memory, the use for the hotel was approved by the Board of Adjustments, and you'll see that case number right there. That occurred on December 17th of 2018. That particular use does require a standalone requirement from the Board of Adjustments, which has been satisfied. We do have a brief discussion about sidewalks. The, you see Article 5 in the section right there, requires eight-foot sidewalks in the central business district. It does contain an approval process where more narrow sidewalks can be requested. That is within the zoning ordinance and is available at staff level, and the applicant's requested seven-foot sidewalks. Staff is recommending accepting those seven-foot sidewalks along the Fairhope Avenue side, and the justification is to remain existing, maintain continuity with the building facades along Fairhope Avenue. However, we don't recommend accepting it along Fairhope Avenue to avoid creating a choke point. So we recommend maintaining eight-foot wide sidewalks along Fairhope Avenue.
Section.
I'm sorry, along Section Street, yes, along Section Street, along Section Street. The other laws and regulations, again, I think we covered everything sufficiently in the MOP process. Impacts on adjacent property, and you've got both the adjacent property and surrounding neighborhood, so you'll notice that the adjacent property is the, is the little courtyard area, and its PPI is 24004, as you see right there. We have, we have backup information, Commissioners, provided by the engineering and architect of record, that that area would be protected, very similar to the in-progress construction on 154 North Section Street, right across from here. And as, when you walk outside and you look to the east, you'll see how the sidewalk is protected so that it can function. That would be very similar, that site would be projected very similarly, very similar methods. Of course, that would be reviewed and approved by the building official. Also, the applicant emphasized that it's likely the building would be built by a local contractor familiar with Fairhope, and that contractor would likely have off-site storage and lay-down facilities for materials, so therefore certain materials could be staged off-site and then brought to the site. They emphasized, you know, emphasized that they will construct the site as necessary. And again, item C.D. seven right there, they basically reiterated the compliance with item six above. Commissioners, I'd like to read to you, this is the statement that the applicant provided, and this is the overall benefit to the community, and I'll just read the entire statement here, that our vision is to design a building which is timeless in nature, in hopes that it's viewed by visitors and locals as a building that could be decades old, may just have been the old Fairhope Hotel located in what we acknowledge is the most important corner of town, and Clay alluded to that earlier. The use of boutique hotel does not currently exist in downtown, provides a use not currently being filled. They are excited about the quaint size of the hotel, their vision is that each room may be decorated in a theme, as Clay mentioned earlier, about the history of Fairhope, and will put people on the street spending time and money in this lovely downtown of Fairhope. So that's their statement regarding the overall benefit to the community, and certainly they can elaborate a bit more when we get to the time to answer questions. Compliance with sound planning principles. Emphasized a statement we made very briefly earlier, Chairman, Commissioners, the first floor retail commercial area, that is supported by the central business district, you see the reference right there. Having commercial retail on the first floor is actually supported and encouraged by the central business district overlay in the zoning ordinance. Property boundaries, dimensions and setback lines, we just simply clarify here on this slide where the zero setback lines are required. Also, we emphasize there at the bottom of the page there that they've carved out the small diagonal area to allow clearance for the Fairhope clock. Elevation, indicating exterior materials, it appears to have a brick facade, and we went through in great detail about building heights through the MOP, that the 30-foot tall is in compliance, the 40-foot tall is related to the ingress egress structures on the proposed rooftop terrace. Locations, tendency and height of exterior lights, no additional site lighting or street lighting is proposed, other than wall-mounted ladders that will be on the building. Mechanical equipment will be on the roof and screened. So we'll have here about curb cut details, and I think we covered all the technical requirements in sufficient detail through the MOP process, and of course, through the building, the building permit review process, and again, as a reminder, the proof of clean site will be furnished. Parking, loading, maneuvering areas, I think we discussed that in great detail during the MOP process. And then the landscape ordinance is not applicable. Dumpster location and screening, there is an alcove inside the building that's shown right now that will function, and one of the plans at this time is to utilize rollout waste containers. They have a storage area, locate that behind a louvered door. We have a cut sheet of that attached right here, and so where that would be located would be, if we flip back here to one of our elevation drawings, and you can see a better drawing, you can see a better drawing right here, and that is in this area right here, and then on the far right end of this elevation view, street-level elevation view you see right there. If y'all indulge me just a second, let me get back to our site plan review. Commissioners, basically just to emphasize here that we've covered all of the review criteria of the site plan review. That brings us to our staff recommendation. So the staff recommendation is approval of case SR 19.01. The condition one, accept the applicant's request to allow the seven-foot wide sidewalks along Fairhope Avenue, non-acceptance as to the request for sidewalks less than eight foot along Section Street. So in other words, maintain the eight-foot wide or wider sidewalks as required by that exception of the zoning ordinance. So Commissioners would be happy to answer questions, happy to answer questions to staff.
Any questions for Buford?
Just to clarify that the bike issue is one that would be resolved with the building permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And so, what you have, Commissioners, is that that requirement is actually within the comprehensive plan, and so it's not a technical requirement of the zoning ordinance, it's incorporated by reference.
Well, comprehensive plan is not a governing ordinance.
Yes, sir, it's not a governing document.
Lights on sidewalks in town, so it's kind of a little juxtaposed.
Exactly, exactly. It's not a governing document. So we certainly illuminated it for the applicant's information, and that'll be covered in sufficient detail during the building process.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time.
This is not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this anyway? If not, you did have your chance. I'll go ahead, and Commissioners?
This is a recommendation of the City Council, correct?
That is correct.
All right, I make a motion to recommend to the City Council approval of site plan SR 19.01 with sub-staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just had one comment about the bikes, just to suggest that, again, with the back-and-forth with the city with the courtyard and maybe the enlarging at the corner, that we do have, you know, businesses renting bikes, people who are here for the, you know, we might, I think that would be a good thing to accommodate for visitors to town who want to experience biking around, and maybe it could be done in partnership with the city in that courtyard.
Any further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, S.D. 1924, public hearing to consider the request of 68B OBB Hamlet 2018 LLC for final plot approval of the Hamlet at Old Battles Village.
Thank you. This is a part of a PUD. It's the fifth phase of a planned unit development known as Old Battles Village. There are 42 lots involved. They have finished construction and are, have satisfied all their final inspection items, so the site is ready to go.
Any questions for Nancy? If not, anybody here, Steve, is this yours? Do you have anything to add at this time?
No, they've finished all the conditions. They've satisfied all those.
Okay.
Most, only, it was just finishing up those final inspection items, and they've, I've gotten sign off from all the supervisors.
Okay, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, subdivision approval case, S.D. 19.24, Hamlet at Old Battles Village, recommend approval, sub-staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, 115211, AT&amp;T's looking to run 2200, 2720 linear feet of fiber optics, Fairhope Avenue to Windmill Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, just writing, sorry about that. This is a project that is for installing cable, 2,720 linear feet of fiber optic cable, starting at Fairhope Avenue, going to Windmill Road, and it's on Thompson Hall Road. This is north of where those trees are that they are trying to preserve, so we put some language about the trees, but that area is not quite as sensitive as that main thoroughfare where everybody takes photographs. And that's pretty much it. These are standard conditions, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody here from AT&amp;T? If not, I'll go ahead, and this is not a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak to this? Commissioners?
Richard, are you good with this?
Well, I'm fine with them putting fiber in. I will tell you, they have been tearing up some of our utilities in the process, and we're trying to work with them now to be more cooperative with us in terms of, you know, letting us stay ahead of them in terms of line locating, and them actually digging and identifying what we marked so that they don't hit it. And we're working with them, and I'm happy to allow them to do more, but we're, we're not exactly happy with them right now.
Well, I mean, is that put a burden on, putting a burden on y'all?
Absolutely.
Well, we do have a requirement.
Do you have a suggestion for reconciliation?
Well, Saturday, they hit a six-inch water line in Quail Creek, and, I mean, I obviously had to call people in to come fix it, and that becomes a problem, and, I mean, it just wears people out, you know, when they're working pretty hard all week and have to stop what they're doing on Saturday to come fix things. So we're, I asked Wade to look at maybe just working weekdays, and they were born, from what I understand, 98 or Greeno Road, I'm not sure if it was.
They're down on scene at 98 right now.
At night, at night, nine o'clock at night. And we're thinking, well, if they hit something at nine o'clock at night, it's going to be, just to get everything, you know, to facilitate and get things going to fix, it's a problem.
There is a requirement for pre-construction. There is a requirement in here for pre-construction, for our staff to meet with them.
And I'm telling you, we talked with Eric today about, you know, how to get a little bit better handle on, you know, maybe inspecting, maybe requiring them to work different hours, but, and I'm not saying we shouldn't approve this at all, I'm just saying that right now we're.
But is it costing the city money?
Well, no.
Or is AT&amp;T pick up the tab for anything they do?
They're going to pay to get them, they're going to pay to get the utilities fixed. We're going to bill them for what it takes to do it, but that's not the point. The point is we've got a whole lot of other things we need to be doing. is we've got a whole lot of other things we need to be doing, and we don't need to be repairing stuff that doesn't, or shouldn't have to be repaired.
You have a solution?
Well, I mean, at one, at some point, I'm going to say we'll not approve anymore until we get what we're doing worked out and straightened out. But I think we've made enough commitment today to where I think we're going to be. I just want everybody to be aware.
Could you require them to have a contractor of their own on-call for situations like this?
The contractor that does the work for the fiber has a small boring machine, and they're pulling conduit. And to dig up, I mean, the equipment we would need to help dig up and get things fixed from our end require different materials and sometimes different equipment. So they've offered to dig the hole for us, you know, they've offered to help us fix it. But the point is them not taking the time and due diligence to avoid damage to start with. That's what we're trying to get past right now.
Well, you know, in my forestry business, as it relates to logging companies, we require performance deposit for them. But if there is a problem, they forfeit their performance deposits. So, I mean.
Well, that may be an option.
That may be, that may be an option, but you got to make it, you got to make it significant enough that they can afford, they're going to afford themselves the opportunity to slow down and do it the way they, they're supposed to do it. But it's all about the money.
Right. Oh, I understand. And that's why they're not paying as much attention to it now, because they're trying to get conduit in the ground.
Then maybe that, then maybe that's just one of the solutions.
We are working on it. I just want everybody to be aware that, you know, it's not as easy as to sit back and say, oh, yeah, let them put all the fiber they want to all over town because it's not, you know, hurting us. But actually.
That's why I asked.
Yeah. And I appreciate that.
Well, and that's why I, whenever any of my insurance customers cut any fiber optic line, they get a $4,800 invoice from AT&amp;T to fix it. And AT&amp;T won't allow anybody else to fix it. They do it themselves. So, you know, you go out there and fix it for a hundred bucks, but that's a good moneymaker tool. So why don't you put $10,000 on it, any repair? Y'all do the repairs for $10,000 and just send them an invoice.
Make you a little bit more cautious digging around that fiber optic line.
You know, exactly. With all that said, we're at the point of a motion.
I'll make a motion for case number 19.13 that we approve with whatever conditions recommended by the staff.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Same issue, this time it's 1,878 feet, and this time it's going from Pensacola Avenue to Tensaw Avenue and North Mobile Street. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. I would say this in 115211, review for approximately 1,049 linear feet of fiber optic cable, directional bore, and approximately 1,878 linear feet of aerial cable that's going on existing cable overlapped on top of it. And just touch on what you were talking about on the previously, we have a new right-of-way inspector, so he is starting to begin inspecting these sites, and he's catching them where they're getting, starting work where the permit hasn't been completed yet. So he's trying to get in front of all these guys to help with this issue here. And some of these comments, we can address at staff level, taking the recommendation of possibly coming up with a bond or some other language to add in to these reviews, to add some more requirements to help protect the assets that we have that are underground and not add additional work on city staff where it's, where it's definitely not needed. But Cody Johnson is our new right-of-way inspector, and he has been reviewing these cases after they go through planning commission. They go to his desk, and he's going out, and he's taking photos and looking at each individual site, checking for possible problems, whether it's trees, whether it's born under a road, drainage, that type of deal. So we do now have an extra set of eyes that are able to help out on these right-of-way projects.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Just one, one point of clarification. The deposit, the performance deposit I was referring to is not a bond.
Okay.
It is a cash deposit with the city. And it comes with strings attached to it.
Right. That's definitely something we give Richard, that's, we can come up with the right language to put in there, and it's something that can definitely help us out because, you know, you're right, they look at and go, well, if it's only going to cost me a nickel, but I'm going to make a dollar off of it.
That's exactly the way it works.
Well, then you throw that nickel away, you take your 95 cents, and you move on. So completely, completely understand that.
And so Commissioners, that would, that would most likely be an amendment to the right-of-way ordinance.
Correct. And on the current project at hand, as I said, there'll be seven flush-grade handholds and four pedestals indicated on the drawings. Up on the map shows the general location of the area going down Pensacola, Tensaw. This is going to service part of the new subdivision that was accepted a few months ago. Staff's recommendation is as normal, doesn't have any extra conditions. Just the applicant should follow the general comments related to the utility work as stated, and the applicant's contractor shall follow the right-of-way installation permitting and work procedures documents prepared by the building official. I'd be happy to answer any particular questions that you may have for staff.
Any questions for Mike?
Thank you, sir. Anybody in the audience wish to ask any questions? If not, Commissioners?
And don't diminish the inconvenience to our customers when those things happen. I mean, that is almost as difficult to swallow as having people have to respond on the weekends. So I'll just make that point, and we'll work harder on trying to find a remedy to that. And I like your approach to our, but case, Mr. Chairman, case UR 19-14, I make a motion we accept that request based on the conditions recommended by staff.
I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the review, IR 1902, an informal review, Calvert at two-lot subdivision, two-lot minor.
Wait, what are we on?
1902, if I'm correct.
Oh, three.
I don't have a 1902.
There's not.
I know we do. On my original.
There's not a staff report.
I'm sorry, what?
There's not a staff report.
There's not a staff.
So anybody that is going to present this in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Oh, definitely.
Showing the two lots and also the four lot part down. I'll be for you if you want to show that wherever you got it.
Is that pushed down and up or side to side?
Side to side.
Okay. My name's Stuart Smith. I'm representing the property owner for this, for this subdivision. Little backstory on what had happened is the guy, the property owner, wanted to purchase this property, and at the time, the procedures that were in place were family divisions in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Fairhope were allowed. And my client had mentioned and talked to staff at that time, and at that time, they were in agreement with, you know, those were protocols that you could refer with. Staff changes occurred since then, and so now protocol has changed slightly. So that's kind of put my client in a bind. What we're hoping to do is for y'all to allow with the family subdivision and two-lot minor split, but if that does not occur, we will move forward with the five lots in hopes that y'all will provide us a waiver for the family portion in the back, which would be, this is what was actually approved by the county. Parcels A, B, and C were going to be retained by the family with lot parcel D to be split into two parcels, going through the actual subdivision regulations that the city would require. Now, that had been approved by the county. That's a little closer view of what was actually going to go through
So to sum up, and reiterate what he was saying, was he proposed to staff a two-lot minor subdivision, and in further review of the case, it was determined that there was the initial four-lot family exemption subdivision through the county, which according to Fairhope subdivision regulations, does not acknowledge a family exemption or any type of exemption from the subdivision regulations. Therefore, with splitting that parcel D into two lots on top of the other split, the splitting of the family division led you with parcel A, B, C, D1, and D2 for a total of five lots. Not being able to recognize the family exemption, that would raise the subdivision case into a five-lot split, which makes it a major subdivision that would go through the preliminary plat and final plat process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So what is the question? What are y'all asking us right now? Are you asking us for an exception to do this?
This is not an acceptance for anything. This was held over from a previous meeting to be able to come or turn this into an informal review to kind of get the planning commission's feelings on possibly doing the five-lot division, if I'm speaking correctly, to do the five-lot division with a waiver of the requirement of the lots fronted on a publicly paved maintained road, if that's.
Yes. I mean, the three lots that are into the back, parcels A, B, and C, we would like to have, this is a 60-foot wide access or flag lot that would allow ingress egress easement to access B and C, which was intended to be for the children.
Oh, I understand now. So you're looking at dividing D into two lots.
Right.
Right now, it's just all just one big parcel.
Yes, sir.
So you're immediately looking at doing really a three-lot subdivision, you could and have D be two lots, but then you got A, B, and C would be a flag lot. Ken, I kind of look at Ken on these kinds of things. I, you know, I, to me, ultimately, at the end of the day, you can go major or minor and typically get what you want. But, you know, I know there are lines that Ken does not like us to cross.
I think it may be this application that, one of the last thing Wayne and I talked about was the fact that the county does allow family exemptions, but it's not provided for in our subdivision regulations, and therefore it's, it's not authorized. So they should, they should just make application for a proposed subdivision, and we would take it up for, or you would take it up for what it is. It'll either be a minor or a major.
Is this property still in the county?
Oh, is it? That's the other thing. It is well inside the county. I mean, it's two miles away from fire jurisdiction, and it's over a mile outside of police jurisdiction.
It's in the Fairhope extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Right. The property is located.
That's her issue. So it's in the county, and the county recognized.
It's an unzoned parcel, unzoned by the county, outside of the police jurisdiction, outside of our.
It's always been. It's a big problem now with the county because county's legal staff says that there's no such thing as a, as an exempt subdivision.
Well, the county acknowledges it. It's the city that doesn't.
Well, they did because they approved it. It was approved. Anyway, it's a.
Are you saying they wouldn't acknowledge it and start it over now?
Well, they don't have a choice. I mean, there's no, there's no choice now. It's in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of city Fairhope.
So he's trying.
But there is, my understanding is there is a bill in front of our state legislature to eliminate most of the extraterritorial jurisdictions of all the municipalities in this state. How about that?
Right.
Want to hold off for a little while?
Well, I mean, I don't even think they're sitting down to talk about that till September, isn't it?
I do not know exact timeframe.
These are those things that I don't, on one hand, I don't have a real big issue with, but on the other hand, if we allow it here, I mean, where do we not allow it? And then, you know, we're having a five-lot subdivision that we allow on a minor. If we want to allow five-lot subdivisions on minors, and we want to allow flag lots, and we want to allow lots that don't have, you know, paved access going to them, we really, to me, need to change our regulations to allow that. I don't see where.
You hit, you hit the nail, that's a nail on the head, right there.
I mean, I like, you know, I like it if it were me. I would want to do a major. I wouldn't want to spend that money. I wouldn't want to have to, you know, have all the regulations. But, I mean, you know, I don't, if we want to change our rules out in the ETJ, we need to change the rules out in the ETJ. I'd like to change rules in the ETJ, but, you know, my change, a lot of people would like, because I like to see three-acre lot minimums out there. You know.
So I was going to ask, is the adjacent property like property?
The adjacent property is a lot of family-owned. There's some stuff down the street, but most of it's all larger tracks throughout that road. And, you know, and keep in mind too, I mean, this was allowed up until just recently by Fairhope. This, this is not new.
Family subdivisions haven't been allowed on Fairhope for.
They've been honored by Fairhope.
The way we handled them, the way we have been handled on them for the last many years is that the city writes a letter of not acknowledging, we just acknowledge the county did it. We don't, we don't acknowledge, you know, we don't get engaged in it. We just write a letter to 911 acknowledging that they did that. They did a, and we know they did that. So that's how.
When do we stop doing that?
About two weeks today.
Chairman, Commissioners, you'll notice under Old New Business, I'm going to make a statement on this toward the end, so I won't delay our, detain our applicant to hear that, but I'm going to provide some clarity on that here very shortly.
Let me ask you this question. I'm not sitting here trying to help you circumvent regulations. Why don't you just do a four-lot subdivision?
Well.
Why don't you, why don't you do a four-lot subdivision? A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
And.
Okay. Well, that's what we're here for, to see what you would, how y'all would like us to proceed.
Four-lot subdivision, minor subdivision. Right?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Chairman?
Well, he wants D into two, so he's cutting back one. I'd do A, B, and D.
No, I'm saying do D as one, as one lot, right now. Right now.
Well, there's nothing on, I mean, he could combine A and B or B and C and then still have, do a four lot like you're saying.
That's right.
And have two for D, but I think, you know, that's what you're looking at. Because that's the maximum on the minor.
Okay.
Okay, just call it. Then you come back and do a, do a subdivision of one of the other lots.
We didn't even talk to staff, because there are going to be some exceptions with the flag and the access not being.
Well, that's the other. If we have to move forward with any type of subdivision that allow the access to back, we're going to, would y'all be willing to provide or commit to a waiver of the, of Section 5, was it E or C?
That's the paved road and all.
Yes, sir.
Was that what we did for Jason Tickle down there on County Road 3, where everybody came out for environmental reasons and aesthetic reasons, we allowed.
Y'all did that for a project there.
Chairman, that.
We just allowed gravel road in North Mobile. But, we just allowed gravel road on North Mobile.
We did something with Bill Street, and we also did one out there, and we called it a, something, something, something was allowed under rules.
But Lee, that's, that's really not a flag lot. If that's, that's a pure, if that made up as a right-of-way, it's not part of parcel A. It's a right-of-way that accesses C, D, and A. A, B, and C. And so it doesn't constitute flag lot for A. It's just, it's a road.
As long as the road goes to the end of A.
As long as the road goes.
Otherwise, he doesn't have 100-foot frontage.
Well, you could, you could, you could solve that problem by bringing it in and bringing it in further into A.
I mean, Buford, you might.
Eliminates the flag lot. You understand what I'm saying?
Commissioners, the.
Would you have then, you'd have a 30 or 50-foot easement across the bottom of D.
Let me stop this now. I don't think we need to assign this subdivision.
And they all connect to A.
I don't think we need to sign this subdivision from up here. I think you probably just need to meet with staff members and kind of get their blessing or where they work with us. I think it looks like, you know, people are willing to work with you some, but, you know, we do have a certain number of regulations that we can't just go throw them all out, or we might as well just.
I understand. This was staff recommendation to discuss with y'all, and if y'all are willing, you know, to say, all right, well, let's move forward working with staff, I'm, I'm happy with doing that because staff is very helpful.
I'll just say, I listen to staff very carefully on their recommendations when I vote.
Okay.
Chairman, could we hear from Buford what the new policy is on the family subdivision?
So, so Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, Councilman Brown. I'll just go ahead and make this statement now, that what I was going to state during Old New Business. And I just want to, you know, publicly, publicly say, this is my call, and that as an interim director, I do not feel comfortable. call, and that as an interim director, I do not feel comfortable signing plats that I know have not come before this, this commission. That if the subdivision regulations of the City of Fairhope do not allow a family division, do not have provision for a family division, then, then, then any subdivisions need to come before this commission, go through the normal approval process, and that's my recommendation. It is, I think it's, I think it's probably possible and advisable that we develop a future amendment to the subdivision regulations that contemplates a family division within the ETJ, but still is brought before this commission. Possibly, the cost of that type of application would be less, but again, I don't have a recommendation for you today, other than that we follow the subdivision regulations, but I think it's definitely wise that we develop some type of, some type of future amendment that does contemplate what occurs in the ETJ, since the county does allow it. How that would work and how that would look, I can't tell you today, but that's something we'll certainly contemplate.
Well, even though I've got a very strong selfish reason to disagree with you on that, I think you're probably right. And in my, you know, 16 years on here, I think I have seen two or three family subdivisions that, at the end of the day, the, a family member actually owned both pieces.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it's kind of that, you know, recommendations to die by a thousand scratches. You know, you get a family subdivision of 100 acres that becomes two 50-acre lots, and then, you know, then you get, from that, you can get, you know, four, six acre lots and another four six, and be up to eight, and then you divide those and divide those, and pretty soon you can have 100 lots with no water retention or sidewalks or anything.
Absolutely, Chairman. And, and, and just, just, again, not trying to write the, write the amendment today, but for example, I think that if we were able to develop such an amendment, that one thing it would contemplate is some type of waiting period, so that way, if it's a genuine bona fide family subdivision that meets all the criteria, we do bring it before this commission for approval, and then they cannot re-subdivide for a specified waiting period. So something along those lines. Certainly, we would research what our neighbors are utilizing, because I know there are similar procedures in Daphne and Fairhope, and, excuse me, in Daphne and Foley, that we could look to their success and how they operate, and come up with a system that might be a bit more streamlined for a family division, but probably have some type of waiting period to avoid that exact same problem, is that it, you know, that it meets the criteria for a family subdivision, it remains in the family for a specified period before it's re-subdivided.
Well, and I think with that, another thing that, you know, we were noticing on this one, is with that flag lots, one of the issues that I always see that I get uncomfortable with, is I think there are plenty of cases where if people want to have really large lots with a narrow access to them, you know, behind a frontage lot, that we should allow that as long as, you know, our city engineers are happy with. In other words, you know, there's a garbage plan and a, you know, and a fire, you know, and a fire hydrant, et cetera. You know, if somebody wants a 50-acre lot with a 50-foot access, as long as, you know, they can get the garbage taken care of and a fire truck down there, you know, we should encourage some of that, I think.
Yes, sir, and, and also that we would communicate with the Bowlin County Highway Department, so that way, you know, the highway department is aware if, if lots are being created that might find themselves on the open market at some point, that they may require that an actual right of way is prepared and an actual road is constructed. And so, again, you get that by having a review process, and so that would be my recommendation, Commissioners.
All right. Last item on the agenda, other than Old and New Business, is informal review to consider a request to Southland Place Property Owners Association for plat approval of a re-subdivision of Common Area 10 of Southland Place subdivision, a two lot minor subdivision.
Yes. This is a proposal staff's having some concern over, because what they're doing is proposing to divide the green space. And in this particular case, they are proposing to divide it for purposes of solving some drainage problems. So there's some inconsistency in our minds in terms of, you know, green space is there to absorb for stormwater, and then, anyway, so that, that's one of the concerns we've listed here. We met with our, with the Planning Commission Legal Counsel to identify his concerns. In this particular case, the green space really functions as a focal point. You'll see that the entrance road kind of dead ends into that, so that it still is a focal point. It may have that curve, but your visual is still in that location where that green space is. So we just have some very concerned, some big concerns over this, and we wanted to get some feedback, the applicant wanted to get feedback as well, to get the Planning Commission's view on this division of green space. If you have questions to Ken.
Okay, so it's yours, Larry? Do you want to let us know why, why y'all want to, why they want to do this?
Yes.
This is a fully developed subdivision.
It is, and this is actually not the first time that they have done this. I don't know how the first one went through, they, but they reached out to me and asked me if I could subdivide this, and I told them, you know, well, most likely it's going to require revision to the PUD. And so, you know, my question to them was, why are y'all looking to do this? And so, they, they've had a drainage study done by Driven Engineering, because there are some lots that have flooding in the rains that back up to some of the detention ponds closer to the school area, and there was actually a lot of documentation within that drainage study, where they were corresponding with the city, with attorneys, and so there's a lot more information here that I don't know. I haven't been paid to totally study the other engineers' drainage study, but they were asking me to go through the subdivision process. When I brought it to the city to submit, they raised their questions and asked if we'd be willing to pull it off the agenda to do an informal hearing, and we said absolutely, because we want to make sure that we're going to be able to succeed in this endeavor. But they're not, the subdivision itself will not rectify the drainage. They're trying to raise funds to be able to pipe some additional storm pipe areas to be able to increase some detention in different areas. So they're looking at raising funds to be able to fix.
So they're looking at selling a lot to have a house be built on.
Correct.
To raise funds to do the water project.
Yes.
They haven't done the old days of assessments to the land, to the property owners.
They.
I, I think, this is my, my opinion, if you want to present it, present it, and my question's going to be, you know, does it meet R2? Does it meet R3? Does it meet the surrounding? I'm going to have to listen to Buford go on and on about the density in that area, and what kind of density, and whether or not the green space remainder meets our current green space requirements. And to me, if the green space remainder meets the current green space requirements, and the density is not greater than what's out there already, I don't have necessarily a moral objection with changing a PUD. I do have a moral objection, we'll listen to Buford explain the density ratios again. But, but, you know, that's my thought, but, but it's just kind of, but some other commissioners may feel like if we open the door to a PUD and to green space being a little subdivided, that, you know, where do we close it? And I would be, you know, listening to the engineers and the staff, and that recommendation would mean a lot to me on something like that, and then I'd also have to listen to the, you know, Ken over here and see what he says about it.
But I mean, the staff recommendations, unless I'm misreading this, already are telling us that it will not meet the green space requirements.
That's what I say.
So like, we don't need to wait until.
It would have met the old ones when we first submitted, but unfortunately, since we've submitted, the green space requirements have changed. So we would meet the, we would have, we would meet the green space requirements of when the PUD was first approved, and then also when we originally were submitting this, but in that timeframe of us holding over and everything, the green spaces.
But what it is today is what you'll be required to meet.
Well, we'll be coming in for a PUD, which puts it all up in the air, but yes, we would be, we were going to be above 10%, but now we would not be above, what is it, the 15%?
Well, and the other part, subdivisions are developed with green space in mind.
Yeah.
Just to accomplish an objective.
Yeah.
My perspective, number one.
Mm-hmm.
But this is not something that's going to solve by developing these two lots.
Yeah.
It's not going to solve the drainage problem within this community with those two lots.
Yeah.
You know, the, the money to get from those two lots is going to go to do something else. My feeling about it is, let Property Owners Association tell everybody to buck up, and there's your money.
Well.
But to start changing.
The report that they have isn't, this isn't a POA issue, this is a city issue, and this is a engineer issue from the original design. I didn't do the report, but that's what the report states. They're looking for an alternate method versus making it a city issue. That, that's, that's the, that's the concept that they've been presenting to me. I mean, there, there's a lot of history within that report, and I don't know, I forwarded it to Richard, I don't know if you've been able to fully dive into it.
This is the same development we had, the seven acre parcel that was never going to be developed and.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's next door, it's not the same development. This is a, this is a different development. This is a D.R. Horton subdivision.
Well, that's what it turned into. Isn't it?
That was Truland that came in and bought those from Burn.
This is that seven acre parcel.
No, this is an existing subdivision that's been developed for many years.
Now, this subdivision, yours, this is one that Driven did back years ago. The one you're talking about is.
I think, I think Ms. McKellar is probably thinking of Pine Wood.
It's this way.
Is this the third time that common lots have been? Pine Wood was the, the, yes, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's.
Thinking about the green space that we went round and round about, I thought this was coming back to me. I was like, really? Really?
That's about, that's about, that's about a quarter mile east. It's close, but, but, but it's a different developer.
I think the important thing for the Planning Commission to consider is we're getting a lot of, the demand on green space is there. People are wanting to reduce that, and I think y'all just need to be highly aware of that concern out there.
And I, I want to make sure everybody, we're not talking about routine maintenance at HOA. Like, my subdivision right now, if you go through it, we've got an excavator sitting there, and we're draining our pond down to do our routine maintenance at the cost of $25,000, and we might be doing a special assessment if, if the money dwindles down in our account on that board, but that, that's not what we're discussing here. We're not talking about just simple cutting down the grass and excavating sediment that's accumulated. They, they have an engineer that's put in some critical, and we're not talking about cheap solutions to fix an issue that they, they believe they have. And so, I just want to make sure there's a distinguishing, we're not talking about routine maintenance here.
It would be good to see that report, because the information that we have, we just see a pattern of increasing density. The lot sizes were changed to increased density, and then this common area was already subdivided to increased density, and now there's another one.
Yeah.
So when you see that, we're seeing increased production of stormwater.
Yeah, and I understand, that's a very valid point, that they will be increasing by taking away green space, but also, this isn't a developer that's trying to get, this is the people who live there, who are saying, we want two more houses to be able to fix our drainage, we want to be able to sell these two lots, and so, you're, you're absolutely right, they need to take that into consideration, too.
Richard, do you have anything to?
And, you know, Ken, I don't want to play lawyer, but, but here is the, the problem that I see, and I've, I've been down this path, not only when I worked for county, but with, with the city. The Code of Alabama is very clear that, it's called, it has language about vacating parts or portions of subdivision. I understand when this plat was recorded, this area was recorded as common area, and lots were sold. That means that every individual who owns a lot in there is a fractional owner of this common area. So if there's 100 lots associated with this phase, there's 100 unit owners, and if there's couples on the deeds, then it could be up to 200 owners. And I, and when I read the Code of Alabama, it says, once lots are sold, the only way that that can be changed is by 100% consensus of the ownership. So I don't think we have the legal authority unless every owner in there signs the plat application divided, because I'm, I'm concerned that those lots that have already been divided as common area, it was proved by here, is if I live in that neighborhood, I want, I own some portion of that house that person lives on, because that common area was never vacated, because the only body that can vacate it is either 100% consensus of the fractional landowners, or the action of city council. They're the only one that has the ability to vacate an easement, and a common area is an easement placed in the land, meaning that once it's placed there and that plat is recorded and lots are sold, it's permanent existence. That, that is, that's how, I've never heard it described any other way. If you divide it in half, you have two homes now that exist on, on common area that's owned in common by everybody else. How that got through title insurance, I have no clue, but, but a common area is no different than a right of way, or a drainage easement, or a utility easement. If it's recorded as part of a plat, it's a permanent recorded instrument until it is vacated, and the code is very clear how, how the vacation of those things happen. So that is my concern, is I don't think this body has the ability to contemplate unless the owners have made an application. And I don't think the POA, the code doesn't says that there is a proxy for that ownership. It says only if each and every owner of that common area applies for that vacation. So that's just my opinion, and I know Ken has looked at it, but I, I don't know if we legally consider this, and, and I think the, the, the code, you know, anticipated that common area is just that, it's owned fractionally in common by every person that bought a lot in there, they own a common portion of that property, and unless they individually consent to it unanimously, I don't think it can be, be legally transferred or done away with. And that, that is just, that is my concern, and I know that this happened in Daphne, this happened in Bowlin County, and the legal opinion was that we will consider it, but that plat may have 200 signature blocks on it before it can be recorded.
So we don't know if Southland Place, if they went to every, and got a signature for everyone.
No. The only way, the only way a plat can be recorded is have the legal signature of the property owners on it, so, and in this case, it's a, whatever, whatever phase of this development that common area exists in, every lot in that phase that was recorded is, is a known.
Well, the legal, well, the owner would be Southland Place POA, wouldn't it?
Well.
It's not jointly collined, so it'd be the POA, so if the POA board said it, would they not have the right?
That would be an opinion.
Or would the subdivision rights have like a, something like when, when our condo did away with the tennis court, we had to have a 75% vote to change the tennis court to parking or something.
And again, the, the section of the Code of Alabama I'm referring to doesn't, doesn't contemplate a POA acting as a proxy for all the owners. It, it says that if the, if lots are sold, then the only way to vacate that common area, or whatever feature it is that's recorded, is by 100% of the property owners who hold it in common acquiesce into it, so.
I have looked at this, and there's a summary of my views set out in the staff report. I have not looked at the particular aspect of this Richard raises. Familiar with the statute, I'll just need to look at it. There could be a, either a provision in that statute or others, or in the case law, where parties who would have the rights Richard's talking about can by contract, such as the restrictive covenants, modify them. I'll, I'll just need to look at that aspect of it.
Regardless, Larry, I think you're looking at an uphill battle.
Well, there, sorry, let me finish. There was a reason I didn't even bring that one up, because I've already told my applicant, if his attorney can't get Ken satisfied, that they're on the same page, we're up against an uphill battle, and so that's why I wanted to focus on mainly the green space aspect of it, because that was the biggest concern that I had. If, if, if the HOA or the POA's attorney can't satisfy the staff's legal question, we're not coming, but if we can get past that hurdle, which, even if they have to get 100% signatures with the costs that they're thinking about, they're pretty sure that if they say, we're going to have an assessment for this amount, or we're going to try to sell these lots, they're pretty sure they're going to get 100% signatures, because these people can't afford the cost of the utility improvement that they're talking about. And so, to me, that, that's a side item, and we're.
How many lots are there? Where do you think the value of these lots are?
They've already sold two, and I think they sold them for 45,000 or 50,000, and so this would be the second one that they'd be selling, and I think that.
So they would raise 80,000, 100,000.
Well, for those two lots, but they've already got two, they just sold, so.
How many lots are in there?
How many existing lots?
Five.
Over 100.
Yeah.
On this, on this base, there's only.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Are, are you familiar with the Culver system that goes through these?
Are, are you familiar with the culvert system that goes through these common area lots that you're subdividing? I mean, I'm sure you are.
Yes, yeah.
Is that part of the improvements they're talking about making?
They're not improving those two culvert, that culvert that's there, no. There is a drainage easement across the, the property and it's hugging one side of it, but yeah.
Drainage, it goes off to the southeast side of the property, is that right?
Um, yes, it goes off to the south portion of the property. It goes to the big common area that's right under this arrow that we're talking about. There's drainage ditches along that common area. And then at one of those lots along the south is actually another small detention pond. Um, but the main flooding areas are actually further up to the north, um, along, um, the road that's running east-west. Um, and that's where the waters come in across from the school property. If you look at the drainage study, that's 100 year.
Offsite waters contributing to the problem?
Yeah, the, if, if you look, if you get a chance to look at the drainage report, maybe the staff can forward it over to y'all. The, um, 100-year storm elevations within the pond are higher than the lots that are surrounding the pond.
The pond next to the middle school?
Mm-hmm. Um, not the pond next to the middle school. There's, there's a pond also back there on the northern portion of the property. And those lots are underwater during the 100-year storm event.
Yeah, but I, I rode through there this afternoon and, I mean, there's, it looks like it's half full of water now.
Yeah.
Like there's no outlet or something, outlet controls clogged up or something?
But within the drainage study, there was no, um, account for offsite flow according to the engineer's study.
As their original drainage, they didn't account for offsite?
Offsite flow, yeah.
So what is the solution?
That's what they're trying to do.
Larry, you do a great job on everything you do, but I just, on this one, it's just to me a slippery slope. We start going down and, you know, allowing pugs to re-subdivide the green spaces. And I know, you know, if they jump into the hoops, there's probably some mights to do that. And if they did, if it didn't meet our current regulations, it even, you know, concerns me more.
Yeah, and.
I don't know, I don't want to speak for.
Like I said, when we, when I first started looking at it, we were going to be within the 10%. And if it wasn't such the hardship, if they were just doing it for, just to gain money, I, I would have probably just told them, no. But I, I started flipping, I didn't do a full in-depth study of their, um, it was driven engineering that did the study for the HOA. Um, but when I started flipping through it and seeing the numbers that they're putting out there, I decided it was a worthy endeavor for them to at least try. Because if I were one of those homeowners and looking at what the potential cost would be, I mean, I, I would want to try other means before, um, so, so thank you for your consideration.
Anything else, Beaufort?
So Chairman Commissioners, the Greeno overlay, Greeno Road overlay discussion. So Chairman Commissioners, as for, uh, for our, for our other old new business, I wanted to inform the commission and I wanted to let the commission know that our staff is developing a Greeno Road overlay. It would be, it would be an additional overlay district appearing in the zoning ordinance. Um, the intention is to bring a document to this commission for the June meeting. Um, that document is under development right now and, um, and I appreciate Wayne Dice for, uh, for giving me documents before leaving and also continuing to provide me some guidance in assembling it. Um, very, very briefly and very, very generally, um, it would address some of the concerns of citizens and the council and mayor regarding, uh, Greeno Road and how the, how it's developed in the future. Placement of certain items such as quick serve restaurants with drive-throughs. Um, provide some criteria for those types of uses when they are proposed for Greeno Road. Um, divide Greeno Road from Parker Road south to about Old Battles Road, um, into three areas. Uh, one would be a gateway district, one would be a village district, just to give some names for them. Um, for example, south of Fairhope Avenue, south of Fairhope Avenue, where we do have quick serve restaurants and drive-throughs, more automobile oriented, the restrictions would be less. They would be much more restrictive north of Fairhope Avenue along that corridor. And so I just wanted to take just a moment and, um, advise the commission that that is something that is under development. The intention is to bring it to you in June and eventually find its way to the city council for final approval. Um, those are just very general descriptions right now. And, um, and as I said, we'll have a, have a document in June, hopefully.
Beaufort, question?
Yes, sir.
What is the depth off of the road that, that, that y'all are actually considering in terms of what you would consider an overlay?
Yes, sir, right now approximately 400 feet from the center line of Greeno.
And Greeno is 100 foot, 120 foot right of way?
I think it's 100 or 120 foot right of way. Um, and so Commissioners, you will, uh, Mike assisted and put together a very nice map. And he used, using ArcGIS, he drew a map and so it would account for, uh, we just simply took the center line of Greeno, of US 98 Greeno. And then so all of the properties that it touches, that it passed through, um, created, uh, just created a draft buffer from there. And then from there, we actually created a draft legal description going a point-by-point location to better clarify where it would fall and what properties it would fall into. So what we tried to do is, and again, this is all in draft stage at this time, look at what that corridor's area of influence would be to take up the various properties east and west of Greeno. So we'll have that as a, we'll have that supporting document with the, uh, with the actual wording.
But you know, in terms of, of, of a longer range plan, for example, in the county, when we were developing zoning maps for districts, you know, one of the issues had to do with, for example, 300, if you had 120, 20-foot right of way, that's 60 feet on one side. You got 400, did you say 400 feet?
Yes, sir, approximately 400 feet.
So now you're down to 340 outside the right of way. But it seems to me that one of the objectives would be to not have the buildings front out specifically on the, on the highway itself, but give you some leeway that would allow you to do a development of some kind that would get you off of the right of way. And in some instances, to even be able to provide as we go forward, some kind of a service road that would eliminate many of the access points that you're normally going to have on a road like Greeno. I mean, good Lord, uh, until they put service roads on Airport Boulevard, that place over there was a bigger train wreck than what you've got at Fairhope Avenue and, uh, and the Greeno Road right now.
And Commissioners, and that's, that's correct. And the, um, one of the comments that we heard, um, uh, just, just general correspondence we get from citizens as well as, we heard this to an extent during the visual preference survey, was whatever you do, do not allow Greeno to become Airport Boulevard. Um, that is the intent. And to answer Mr. Dice's question a little bit better, I think in the future, once we have gone through the recreation and, and recreation of the comprehensive plan, um, long-term, it might actually be advantageous to develop a standalone zoning district for a Greeno Road corridor that can give much more specific criteria and basically just have a zoning district just for that corridor. And so have one area that contemplates more automobile oriented and one that contemplates less automobile oriented. I think for, for the, for the, for the present future, because of the potential development pressure that may be on Greeno, that we can accomplish a lot of those goals with an overlay short-term because that's within my capability of being in, within our staff's capability of preparing right now. Then when we see what the recommendations are of a new comprehensive plan, possibly it may require quite the revamp of the zoning ordinance and create a brand-new zoning ordinance, create, create a brand-new zoning district for Greeno, for that corridor. So all very good ideas.
Yeah, one thing to remember is the area that's already got the drive-throughs, just because they're, you know, the grandfathered in.
Yes, sir, they are there.
They're necessarily good and that, you know, we can leave them grandfathered and still have a higher standard for whatever comes in, in the future.
Yes, sir.
Um, do we have S D 1920 to do an extension?
Yes, sir, Chairman Commissioners. And so S D 1920 is Twin Beach Estates. And, um, um, the April 1st meeting, on the April 1st meeting, we approved the final plat approval for Twin Beach Estates. Um, during the punch list completion process, the, uh, the contractor and the developer have run into a couple of technical issues. I won't take up this commission's time. But out of an abundance of caution, um, the developer's engineer asked if I could verbalize into, verbalize this request to the commission to give them a 60-day extension. Out of an abundance of caution, should their punch list items not be completed by the end of May, if they, if we don't, we, this is our last opportunity to ask for an extension. And so, uh, so that will allow them, certainly this would allow them to get their punch list items complete should they take greater than the end of May to complete them.
We'll have a motion.
Shall I move?
I have a motion to a 60-day extension for Twin Beach Estates. No second, any further. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say nay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
To, uh, I'm a little slow with the question, but have you heard if, if we have people approaching us who are really interested or, or live adjacent to Greeno Road or interested in participating, in giving feedback and being involved, uh, what is the, the means for the public to come to the next meeting? Or should they contact you? What should we?
And Commissioners, certainly, certainly citizens, uh, are welcome, welcome to come to this meeting and participate in the process. And Commissioners, when we have a document ready before you to read, I think it's certainly a reasonable expectation that you may not wish to take action on it uh, when you see it for the first time. Certainly that's a reasonable expectation. And so Chairman Commissioners, if you, you may, you know, you have certain, certain abilities at your disposal. If you wish to have a work session prior to, you know, have a first reading of it, similar to the way you do with the city council, and just simply have staff approach you and ask questions. If you wish to not take action or table it, and then if you wish to further have a work session, uh, related to that item, that would certainly, certainly be a reasonable expectation and certainly something that staff would, would be happy to participate.
I think the best way is to present it without advertising it officially and just get it in everybody's hands and send it out on our email list so that as many people as possible can see it, but not have the advertised version yet. And then, you know, we can tweak it and then advertise it for a, you know, meeting that we want to make a recommendation.
How about, how about, how about having a public meeting on the, on the thing? I mean, Greeno Road, Greeno Road goes way back to prior to 1972. I mean, that's been an issue.
Yes, sir.
Been a thorn in many, many, many people's sides for an extended, long period of time. And I can assure you, and I'm with you Rebecca, there are a lot of people that are interested when they, now that they know that something's coming. It seems to me like we need to get them, we need to get them engaged.
I think, uh, just a thought that I think we need to also think in the future and go past Battles Road. I mean, that's really a big, there's going to, all of our growth is south. Um, I, I think that that might be a some.
Where do our city limits end?
Well, the difficulty Chairman Commissioners is that our, this is a component of the zoning ordinance. And so I did not just randomly chose Battles Road. Once you strike Battles Road, essentially, there's no more property within the city limits south until you reach the airport. And of course, the airport.
I was going to say 32 would be the next cutoff.
Exactly, yes, ma'am. Not until you reach the airport itself, which is isolated because that was an individual annexation. Um, Chairman Commissioners, we are certainly happy to participate in the forum. And it may be that this commission may want to call a special meeting, uh, just for that and not necessarily to take action, but to review it with the public. And we are certainly welcome to, uh, participate.
I think there are, you know, a couple of options. Um, one would be to call a special meeting and another would be to talk to the Greens. Um, because if we have a special meeting, they'll probably be the only people that show up. But I don't mean to be cynical, but I just say it's amazing to me and, and it seems like we have meetings to discuss huge issues and nobody shows up. And then we pass something like L I D and then, you know, when we have a subdivision come up, everybody's, you know, outraged.
And Mr. Chairman Emily, Emily wanted to address, address the commission procedurally how this would work.
Well, and I do want to say that the changes that we're looking at doing are based off of community involvement, which is the, the visual preference survey and the meetings that were held for that. And this information we're compiling is based on the results that we got via those, those meetings and that information.
We've had those meetings, we've had group meetings in many years, hundreds of times. And for some reason, every time we get close like this, somebody says, well, let's have another meeting. Let's do this or let's do that. And then five years later, we still don't have anything. And I'm just like, you know, at some point, you just got to fire that cannon away.
Yeah.
If it's, I mean, I'm asking for specific calls I had today for people saying, I saw that the, the new and old business. I've been writing letters to the planning staff for, you know, all year, asking how I could get involved. And so I'm asking for specific questions that I've heard. And if the answer is come to the next meeting and give your input and we're, we're not going to vote, we're going to hear and adapt, that'd be fine. But I do, you know, I'm, I'm hearing people other than the Greens who, who want to be involved. I, I hope they show up, but it was, it was very specific.
I'm very willing to meet at a meeting. I mean, this is the thing, I, I say, you know, my, my swan song, this is something that I felt like is unfinished business for me for 15 years. And I would just really like to see something on Greeno Road. The one thing that everybody, for, for, you know, you get two people in an office and you got three opinions.
Yeah.
But the one thing everybody agrees with is don't have Greeno Road end up like Airport Boulevard or Highway 59 Foley. And that's the strongest thing that you hear. And when you mentioned extending it further than Battles, I mean, you know, you could put everything out on 181, but unfortunately 181 is not in the city limits for the most part. But everything we're issuing, dealing with the Greeno Road, we're going to be retrofitting on 181 in the next decade.
So Chairman Commissioners, if, uh, if it is acceptable to this commission, um, what I would like to do is have an informal review, uh, on the June meeting for this document. And then between now and then Chairman, we will develop a protocol for having some type of a special meeting. And then when we discuss the informal review in the June meeting, we'll make certain that we very clearly identify dates and times going forward.
Is there anything here that, on that Monday that we have our meeting next month?
Prior to our meeting?
What I'm wondering is we could meet, you know, 30 minutes early and present that as kind of a special.
As a work session.
Work session.
Work session, yes, sir.
Do that for 30 minutes early. Deb?
Lee, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, um.
Wait, 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 wait.
What?
Come to the mic.
I, I don't need to come to the mic. It is because it's recorded.
Yes, ma'am, we can't hear you.
I see microphones everywhere. I'm sorry, you guys. I do have an attitude about this and I think all you guys know why. And Lee, I appreciate the discussions we have had and I'm glad to still see you here. I hope you stay. Um, Deborah Green, 415 Maple Street, Weon Green Nurseries. Um, the thing of it is, uh, when you guys had this, uh, uh, these public meetings, uh, the average length of time people lived in this city that were participating in these meetings was five years. That's how long they've lived here. Their blood, sweat and tears is not on Greeno Road. And the big lie that has been told since before the 60s is that Greeno Road is the entrance into Fairhope. That's garbage and we have documents to prove it, that everybody is protecting downtown and everybody is protecting that little intersection there at Greeno Road and Fairhope Avenue because the politicians were able to have their property rezoned and everybody else was punished. My husband's, I did laugh, if you will, you know it's true.
I'm laughing because I've had said 42 years of.
Exactly, I know. You went through the same garbage we are going through. And as soon as we put up the for sale signs and we sent you and everybody else, Ken, we sent you, everybody else, letters that we could not do this on our own after we promised to. And it's because the politics in this town ran our investors off. And, and anyway, long story short, nobody has talked to any of the property owners along Greeno Road. Not one of us. It's just, let's have a, a, you know, restriction on Greeno Road on top of the restrictions already on Greeno Road. Let's just friggin' take your property. It's not yours. And you need to talk to the property owners first and you need to get our input. We've made promises. And by God, I'll make our property and my husband, he's going, oh God, will she shut up? oh, God, will she shut up? A, I don't know, a memorial to Hiroshima, let's put it that way, before I give legacy property to the city of Fairhope. I won't do it. We made promises, and we will do what we promised, and I'll be goddamned if we're going to be punished for it. Excuse my French. We've been through enough with this city, and I'm sick of everybody coming along saying, oh, well, we have to have a plan for Greeno Road. Well, you've had years to do this, and all of a sudden, for-sale signs go up, a moratorium's put in place, and now you're going to tell us what to do with our property. Ken, you defended us once on that meeting, and you knew that was wrong. We have been through hell with this city, and we won't do it anymore. And you need to talk to everybody along Greeno before you put anything in place, anything. And y'all look at me like I'm crazy. Yeah, I am. I am, I've had it.
You are crazy.
No, sir. You are crazy.
Let's stay, let's stay in order, please.
I've been listening to it for years. It's nonsense what you're saying.
Let's stay in order, but bottom line-
I apologize.
Bring people, let people come to the next meeting who are interested in speak-
Lee, please.
And let me say, it's not, it's not all political-
Let the people of Greeno Road-
And let me say this-
Have some input.
Yeah, and let me say this, with Buford's action earlier today, my family's got seventy-eight acres in Battlesworth that won't be allowed to be subdivided because of the wetlands issue and because of now the family's subdivision. So it's not all political, and it's not that, you know, that any property that I own is all of a sudden not subject to any zoning, every property I own is, is required to zoning, and in one fell swoop, we've got seventy-three acres that's now, you know, pretty much worthless. So, bottom line, we all get hit sometimes, and with your property, your, your property is, is-
This has been going on since the nursery was established-
Quite a bit, quite a bit more valuable than it's been, I understand.
In nineteen thirty-two.
And, and we're trying to make some, some changes that will make that area more attractive to the city of Fairhope and hold it to the standards so it doesn't look like Airport Boulevard.
In whose opinion more attractive?
And the citizens who came out and said they don't want Airport Boulevard to look like, I mean, Fair, Greeno to look like Airport Boulevard.
In the latest review of citizens that have not lived here more than five years.
No, this is, I'm talking about stuff that goes back to Christopher Baker, stuff that goes back to Greg Mims, I'm talking about twenty years ago when the comprehensive plans, people said they don't want Greeno Road to look like Airport Boulevard or Hamburg or Alley. People, that's the one thing that people in Fairhope agree with.
Lee, nobody wants that.
And that's what we're trying to do, so come on out.
And if you knew the people along Greeno Road, you would know-
And your idea that everybody who lives on-
That nobody along Greeno Road wants that.
Until, until McDonald's comes and offers them the money.
And years ago, we tried to come to you with a plan, we had every single property owner along Greeno Road saying, please, we are here to put a plan together, help us.
Right.
We want to do something that, that mixes in and blends one development after another after another, and the city said, I'm sorry, we don't hear you.
Let me give you, let me give you one little tidbit also to go along with your, your opinion. When you say y'all, and you are referring to us, I want you to know that the vast majority, all but probably one person on this planning commission, has been there less than a year. So when you start throwing your terms around about y'all meaning us, be advised that most of the people that you're talking to right here haven't been on this planning commission, they don't know what went on thirty, forty, fifty years.
Exactly, Art, and that is why-
Just a minute, I'm speaking, I am speaking, thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you. And, and so I would suggest to you that you certainly should maybe have a, a little bit of an opinion about maybe educating them in a, in a better tone, better tone of voice than, than what you bring here tonight.
I apologize for that, I apologize again. Art, you and Lee, and please, I do not mean any disrespect to the rest of you, the two of you are the only ones here, other than Ken, that really know, and I'm sorry, sir, I don't know you, and I don't mean any disrespect, that know anything about planning and zoning and about the history, all right?
Right.
And it is a compliment to you, it is not a diss on anyone else. Please forgive me, I don't mean that.
Do we have to listen to this anymore?
But I, I just wish that number one, you would please include the property owners along Greeno Road.
We're doing that, we're meeting at four-thirty, bring them out.
And that would be great.
And, and I'll just say, one area that I don't agree with is everybody on Greeno Road's wonderful, therefore, nobody's going to sell their property to anything that would have a drive-through or look horrible, because the bottom line is, when money starts talking, people start selling.
And we've had this conversation-
And if I had land on Greeno, I would sell it to a McDonald's tomorrow if they paid me the most, but if you had it, I wouldn't want to allow you to be able to do that.
Well, Lee, we-
But I'm just saying, that's how we are.
Let me ask you this, and this is a valid question, we already have a drive-through. Does what mandates along prohibit us from having a drive-through?
Well, that's what we're going to be discussing, so let's just wait and see what the discussion is and what the suggestions are of how to have Greeno Road not end up looking like Airport Boulevard. I don't know what our professionals are going to suggest, but I have a feeling they're going to suggest things like buildings face Greeno, certain amounts of landscaping between Greeno and the buildings, and things like that, but, but we have finished this meeting today, and it's time to go eat supper, but four-thirty, before the next meeting, we'll have a work session that will ride into our meeting at five.
Do y'all, excuse me, just one more question.
Let's do a motion to adjourn, we can talk after.
And, and I apologize, I'm sorry.
Do you have the names of property owners along Greeno? I hear you.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, I hear you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Be sure we get that to them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.